Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is our Yaden Borough Caucus meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Go Birds!
Yes. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please excuse our tardiness. We were having a quick personnel meeting. Then we looked at the time and said the public is way more important than this meeting, so let's get to it. So next, we will move on to Roll Call. Please continue, beginning with our esteemed mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Rowan Hempkins.
Present.
President Latoya Monroe.
Present.
Vice President Leanna Rogal.
Present.
Counselor Nicole Beatty.
Present.
Counselor Antoinette Truheart.
Present.
Counselor Michael Trent.
Present.
Counselor Jesse Peetz.
Present.
Counselor Rin Johnson.
Present.
Brianna Brey from Kill Kenny Law.
Present.
Nafis Nichols, our finance director, is not present. Yolanda Hughes, our tax collector, is not present. And we have Megan Tadaro from Pinoni Engineering.
All right. If here's we have a forum, we will get started. Next up, we will move on to our citizens' forum. We have one forum. Ms. Clara Johnson.
Good afternoon, all. And to Good evening. Good evening. The conference is really just a statement I'd like to make on the Grace and Cemetery. First, I want to thank Public Works and the Recreation Department.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Public Works and the Recreation Department for working with the concerned citizens over the last couple of years to get the Grayson Cemetery to the park, to where it is now. Thank you, guys. Next, I would like to know if council could find in the budget to get a sign to go at the back fence where the homeowners live that says "Curb Your Dog," because they are walking their dogs on the cemetery and letting them defecate there, which is not really a good thing. That's a sacred ground. People are buried there. And the other thing I would like to know, I know Public Works have "Curb Your Dog" signs, and could Public Works possibly put a "Curb Your Dog" sign at the back fence there as well? That's my statement. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Clara. Just for clarification, I'm not a pet owner, right? So does "Curb Your Dog" just mean pick up after your dog? Or are we looking for...
It does mean pick up after.
Okay, so but are we looking for no dogs?
I think it... Correct me, Mike, if I'm correct. It means don't let your dog do stuff in that area.
"Curb Your Dog" means clean up.
Here to clean up after it.
I think "no dogs allowed."
Yeah, so I think what we need is no dogs.
No dog allows signs. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for bringing that up. Cemeteries are sacred grounds.
Yes.
And the people that are buried there are loved ones.
Yes.
And I just can't imagine why anyone would think it would be okay to allow their dogs or any other animals to just play and defecate in a cemetery on top of someone's grave.
Right.
It's disrespectful. So I would ask Mr. Pizzullo if you would put that on the top of your list, where those signs could be erected. That would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
I'm not saying that the signs will stop people from doing certain things, but at least, we're doing everything that we can to inform them that this is a cemetery and it deserves to be respected. So please, don't allow your dogs here. Okay?
So do we have oversight over Grayson Cemetery or any of the other cemeteries?
We have oversight over Grayson.
Oh, we have oversight over Grayson. Okay, so maybe we can go as far as to have an ordinance with fines specifically there, if our solicitor could accept it?
Yes.
Okay.
In addition... In addition to continuing the work that some of the community members have started in conjunction with Public Works to revitalize that cemetery.
And we plan on continually to get it back up to the look of a cemetery as it was years and years ago.
Right. So if Public Works will continue to work with the citizens, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Is there a historic marker there?
There are.
There is.
Are they prominent? Should we ask for more?
They are.
Okay. Well, we can do that in addition to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I've worked with several members of the Historical Committee to raise any fallen gravestones and bring them up. And then the winter came, so springtime, we're going to look at this and move forward on this property.
Okay. All right. Sounds like a clean.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, can we move on to our mayor's report?
Thank you, Madam President. My report stands as submitted. I just have two or three items that I'd like to underscore. The mayor's, next mayor's forum has been moved up a week. It'll be held on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, here at Borough Hall Auditorium. And we'll feature their flyers that are out and should be on the website. We're going to have special guest, Yaden Fire Department will present a presentation on safety tips, carbon monoxide and the like, and insights on recruitment. And William Penn School District will have a representative to update us on their building upgrades here in the borough. Next is, just to report on our police staffing. We were up, as you know, full staffing, twenty during the summer. We lost two officers, leaving us with a vacancy of two. We have one officer that is retiring next month and another before the summer. So we'll have three vacancies. The Civil Service Commission did hold, is undergoing a hiring process to fill those vacancies. I could report that fourteen applied and only eight showed up for the written exam, held on February first. Seven showed up for the physical agility test on February eighth, and one failed, leaving us with a pool of six officers. And the top three will be presented to council next week to hire, the top three, right, where we have approval to hire three. And as long as they, pending their successful passing of the polygraph, physical, psychological, and background checks, we'll be back up to full staff until our next retirement. I will note that being chair of the Civil Service Commission about twenty years ago, when we had tests for officers, we would typically get forty, fifty, even sixty applicants. This time, we only got fourteen and only eight showed up. And this is how it's plummeted. The available pool has plummeted. Plus, when you hire them, they may not stay. They go to higher-paying jobs. And it's a game of poaching as it is right now. So tread lightly on officers and use discretion. Want to mention or offer my congratulations to the Philadelphia Eagles on their Super Bowl victory. I think they just aren't around for us, now, man.
Go Birds! Go Birds!
Some of us is dawning Eagles wear, and that's quite all right. Victory Parade is being held tomorrow in the city, starting at Patterson, Broad and Patterson. It's going to go all the way north, Broad Street, Round City Hall, Avenue of the Arts, to the Art Museum. And I want to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day tomorrow. So if you haven't gotten your flowers, guys, or whatever, make sure you do your job. You got a few hours. All right. Madam President.
Ranger.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Happy Valentine's Day. And also, we want to acknowledge that it is also Black History Month. Regardless of what the federal government thinks, it's still here. We're still here. And it matters. So it's in our new borough calendar, and I believe it'll be in our next one as well. So we will move on to our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam President. Next week at Legislative, we will have a host of personnel topics to review and to consider. They'll be discussed in an executive session upcoming. The, next week, we will also consider to appoint, an appointment to the zoning hearing board. The board is looking for two members and an alternate. Also, in the next few days, you will have the, a tile to sign up for Delco Alerts, which will include options to select the types of alerts residents would like to see and receive, including emergencies and road closures, meetings and special event reminders, as well as new ordinances and amendments. And then borough offices will be closed tomorrow and Monday, two seventeen, in honor of President's Day. That concludes my report, Madam President.
All right. Can you elaborate on what you mean by a tile for the Delco Alerts?
Oh, on, if you go onto our website, it's just one of the prominent squares that you can go ahead and click on, and it'll take you right to the signup process.
All right. So if you want to sign up for Delco Alerts, you have to go to our website, and then you'll see a signup feature there. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to our solicitors' report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Good evening.
Good evening.
So some updates from the Solicitors' Office. We have been attending summary appeals for various code violations on behalf of the borough, organizing deposition and documents and witnesses for an ongoing litigation, preparation for trial for ten twenty-four Church Lane, handling ongoing litigation within the borough, assisting the borough manager with preparation of land bank property referrals, working with the borough manager for regarding upcoming sheriff's sales and handling and filing all liens against delinquent property taxes within the borough. If anyone has any questions, I am available to answer.
Thank you very much. I believe our finance director will have an update on our tax collecting at our legislative session next week. Next, we will have our engineers' report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a few announcements. The first one is that the borough received a grant for Providence Road stormwater improvements. It was one hundred and fifty thousand. It is a little bit less than what we put in for, but it is still something. Since this is going to be on Providence Road, just a lot of the stormwater heading along that, along for private properties and adjusting some of the flow there. So we're looking into, with the reduced amount, adjusting some of the scope and what we can do with those funds. So that is one announcement. The second one is a new grant that is coming up that was just announced, is a small water and sewer application that's due April thirtieth. It is, a lot of the work that can be eligible for this program is on water and sewers, which is great. I know in talking with Mike, he's going to take a look at some feasible work and projects that could be up for consideration, and I'll bring that to your attention over the next two months. And the last item is an update on McDayden Church. I know I stood here and said that in February, we'd be getting on one way. Unfortunately, with, there is some delays with the ramps and PennDOT approval, so it will be delayed slightly. As soon as I, there is a meeting set up for next week to try and resolve the issue. So as soon as I have more information, I will share that with you. But I didn't want to make everybody assume that it would be happening. It is slightly delayed.
Okay. Thank you for that update. Was that everything for you?
That's everything, unless...
The hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, can you, there was some other chatter. I didn't catch what that was for and what it'd be used for.
Providence Road there, it's down towards the bottom of the hill where the stream crossing is. It is doing improvements along, for the discharges and inlets along that area, on both sides of the stream.
Okay. Does that have any bearing on, will that alleviate some of the concerns that a property owner had down there?
Yes.
All right. Okay. And is this grant specifically to address that?
Yes.
All right. And lastly, are you a celebrity?
No.
Would you like to tell us what this flyer on our desk is about?
I didn't know you even had that. But no, I won't be here next week. I am sorry about that. But thank you for acknowledging it.
Come on, tell us what it is.
I am receiving an award from the Delaware County Chapter of PSPE, which is Professional Society of Civil Engineers. So I am named as the Young Engineer of the Year. So.
Thank you, Megan. In this, in this era where they're trying to erase women from everything, I think you need to say and speak that a little louder. So.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. You definitely earned your keep hearing gain, and we're proud to have you as our representative.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair. Madam Vice President.
Question with respect to McDayden Church. At our last meeting, you indicated that you were going to reach out to some individuals at PennDOT to set up, to set up a meeting with borough, with some of the borough administrators and the residents that have been directly affected by these car accidents. Where are we with that?
So we provided a contact at PennDOT, and my understanding is Raffi has been reaching out multiple times and has not gotten a response. So we are going to reach out on our own as well and see what the delay is and what the holdup is. Hopefully, we might be able to go out another direction. But per Raffi, they have not responded. So we'll be, I just heard about that tonight. So I'll be taking action this week to try and set that up.
Okay, you're going to reach out directly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes it helps when it comes right from municipality, but at this point, if you haven't heard back, we're going to try other channels and approach them from somewhere else.
Madam President.
No. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that. Yeah, if you get any pushback from PennDOT, let us know. Because, you know, we may need to take it higher, even to the Secretary of Transportation.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if it's...
So don't feel like you're on your own fighting the battle out there.
We will let you know.
We're like the Eagles.
But here's my concern. My concern is, we had this discussion last month, right? So if we were reaching out and we did not receive any response within a timely fashion, right, why does it take another thirty days to voice that and then come up with a remedy? There's no reason for us to, you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
If I could speak that as well. No, I agree there. Just last week, when it's all like, hey, they still haven't gotten back, because I did escalate that through the Speaker's office as well, just to see if we could get some support there. No, but I, we agree, I think everybody agrees there, and it's some frustration with the delay there.
Yeah, I don't think we have to wait until next month.
Right.
You know, I think we need to be consistent.
I think everyone's in agreement with that.
Yeah, could you give a little more information on the grant that was awarded to the old swim club? And is that going to be reallocating for the tennis court rehabbed?
Are you talking about the first bullet on here, the LSA Award? There's been some ongoing discussions. I, at this time, everything had been put on hold, I think, until some decisions were made on how the future of the property, you know, plans for the future of the property. I have not heard anything about that recently. I can certainly discuss with Raffi if that's something we want to explore further, but there was some discussion than not. So we can certainly revisit that if it's still of interest.
I mean, we were awarded a grant. Is this a matter of what we want to do with it?
No. The grant was awarded for a community center, which, since that time of award, has been indicated that we no longer want to pursue that path. So at a certain point, we had asked if we could reallocate, but there was no definite. And then there were some also question marks about the future use of the property. So at the time, we were just told to put it on hold until some decisions had been made.
Madam Chair. So my question is, when do we have the discussion about what other things can be utilized with the, like, is that something we need to talk about as a body and then get back to our engineer? Because if we have a grant, we want to use it. And like, we don't need to have money just sit on the way.
So there was a, there was a survey of that property done a number of years ago, probably twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-two.
Twenty... Not that one. But the one before. That one was for a recreation center, and that was never, you know, but we had Ian Smith Design Group, it's an architecture firm in the city, and they, they made a proposal to have it made into a mixed-use property that had retail below and with a park as well. They sent us schematics and things like that as well. So if you, if we can try to locate those and see if that, if that money could be used for that. But I do know that the amount of money that was awarded may not support something that's, that, of that magnitude. And we don't want to just throw something there that binds us into, you know, the future use of that property. So I guess that is a conversation that we may need to have as a group. And I would think that the, that our planning commission could, could definitely intervene in that aspect, since that would be considered a type of economic development.
Yeah. Madam Chair, so that was one of the things we talked about in our last meeting. So now, having understood this, that's definitely something, if we could get a look at what was done previously to make sense of it moving forward.
And I'm sorry, quite honestly, that, you know, the amount that's allocated may not really...
It's not going to cover the whole thing.
It's not going to go far. Might help us maintain it.
But certainly. And, you know, there are some things that could be done, or can we use that money to leverage additional funds to, to do what, you know, what needs to be done on that property? So we would love to take a look at what was previously done and see what makes sense. Because if we could then put together a proposal to the grantor to let them know we're not just sitting and waiting, that, you know, these are some of the things we'd like to do, and, you know, would you then reallocate based on this, this, and this? Yeah.
Yeah. I think that that, having a clear direction or plan, and making sure that it was discussed at a public meeting, is always very beneficial when going to a grant agency and asking them to reallocate funds.
Right. And up until now, we didn't have a planning commission, so we didn't have the organization to talk about it. But we do now. So we can ask the Counselor Truheart to lead that charge. And would we circle back next month? That be good? All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations again. Next up, we have our, we'll leave our finance for our legislative session, and then we'll have our ordinance and zoning.
Thanks again, Madam President. I'll just recap. January was a very busy month with inspections, rental inspections. It's a very busy time of the year. Every rental unit needs to be inspected annually by the, by the code department. A lot of people don't always know that or respect that. However, we did one hundred forty-two rental inspections in the month of January. And you can see the uptick in the rental inspection revenue there in the first column. The zoning hearing board on January twenty-third heard testimony from the solicitor and architects on behalf of William Penn School District requesting and subsequently approving a special exception. On January twenty-ninth, the Court of Common Pleas, Common Pleas, ordered the Yaden zoning board's petition to quash an appeal by the operator of the property located at seven oh eight and a half Church Lane to operate a banquet hall out of that location. A few quick ordinance reminders, two thirty-five dash four. Again, properties are required to be registered and licensed. We will post that full ordinance reminder on the website again. And one thing in our oversight that we've been seeing is an uptick in housing of vehicle parts. So I've posted the full ordinance right there, and we'll again post that online. It's, it's not lawful to house unused vehicle, vehicle parts if they're not in the immediate use of the vehicle. We just see, we see that a lot lately. And that concludes my report.
So next up, we have public safety. I'm sorry, Public Works and then public safety. One of the publics.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First off, we have our e-waste drop-off, February twenty-eighth, between eight and two thirty, at Public Works Garage. All of our parking meters are going to be removed due to our passport app that is going to be starting up, probably the end of this month, beginning of next month. The chief will actually bring us into more information on that. I'd like to ask permission to put on the agenda the sale of all of our old parking meters, two retired police vehicles, one retired parking enforcement vehicle, and emergency management unit that are in need of repairs that cost absolutely more than the vehicles are worth. So it's, I'd like to put them up on the municipal. Pico Energy Gas Company is coming in to install one mile of new gas main, which will be starting Union Avenue at Fairview, heading to Bailey Road, Bailey Road to Wycombe, Wycombe Avenue to McDay Boulevard. This will cause some road closures, some inconveniences. There will be a, everything will be posted on the internet, websites, Facebook. There will be detour signs out. This is an ongoing project that will be actually running into probably October or November of this year. Abatements, seven hundred block of Bullock Avenue, ten hundred block of Church Lane have been abated several times this month. I do have in my report, if everybody sees that ice storm, a snowstorm planning. I know our snowstorms have been difficult, weather, ice, freezing. If anybody has any questions on that, please, I'm going to open the floor for that, to ask any questions about how we handled snowstorms, ice storms. Yesterday or two days ago, the storm was the perfect storm with the weather. Two weeks ago, with the freezing weather, it's hard to manage. I know there were some concerns and complaints, but we're doing the best we can. If anybody has any questions, open the floor to any of that.
Madam Chair.
Well, you can't open the floor. Vice President.
With respect to your snow management, so, not to pad this most recent storm, but the storm prior to, I do understand that the property owners that are adjacent to the entry slash exit ways of common driveways are responsible for cleaning off that sidewalk. But as you know, that did not happen with that snowstorm.
Correct.
And because of the severity of the storm and the thick ice, a lot of, of those entryways, exit ways, it was just a sheet of ice and snow. No one touched it. What can we do in the meantime? I do understand code needs to be involved as well. But it was a severe hazardous situation with that last snowstorm, because people literally could not cross the sidewalk because of that entryway being icy. They would have had to walk in the street.
Correct.
And that's even more hazardous. So what can we do to ensure that we can help assist a little bit? Can we at least put some rock salt out there? Because, I mean...
I understand your concerns.
Right.
And there's probably...
We're talking about all the common driveways.
Every common drive, you're right. And even our, even our streets, our streets, crosswalks, I'm going to call them ADA ramps, everything. When it froze, it froze solid, and we had, we had trouble. as Public Works with tons and tons of salt. It's, it's a difficult situation. What can we do if we start salting people's driveway aprons? Where do we, where do we start and where do we end? I, I understand. I, I know where we're at.
Something either we want to enforce like we're supposed to, right?
Exactly.
But we gotta come up with something.
So also.
I agree.
One second, please. So also, the, um, we, we know that for tho- for that storm, was this the one that was, where it was too cold for the ice storm?
It, it started out at twenty degrees when it snowed.
So ice doesn't, the, I mean, salting the ice doesn't, doesn't have any effect if it's at, at, at temperatures that low. Like, it just, it just doesn't.
It doesn't. We had hours to prep everything. If you didn't, if you weren't done in hours, you were, it was over.
Right. And then there was, um, you know, the, the cost. I think the, that particular snowstorm, um, the, there are exorbitant costs associated with the salt and also a limited number, a limited amount of salt that we have that we need to, um, plan out for. Uh, I think it was just the, like, we, we can't control everything.
It was. That was a unique storm where we just, the whole, I think Delaware County was under.
I think that, that one was almost seven thousand dollars worth of salt. And I believe the first, this, this shipment of salt that we have, it's a part of a consortium. So anything else that we get that's additional to that is going to be at a premium and individually because we, am I, am I understanding that correctly? Because we, we kind of bought as part of a group with the set price?
No, no. We have a set price for four hundred tons of salt per year. It's the principle of each storm, no matter whether it's this much ice or twelve inches of snow, we're dropping five, uh, fifty tons of salt. It doesn't matter which, what the size of the storm.
Do I mean, after that four hundred, then what?
No, after the four hundred, we're, we're still locked into that.
We're still locked into a price.
We're, we're up to right now, we, we probably have on the ground two hundred tons that we've used so far this year.
And each, every fifty tons is just about seven thousand dollars.
Exact- it, it gets, it gets pricey and it's tough. And that storm was, um, it was unique. It wasn't something that happens all the time. Look at yesterday, the day before. It's gone. It melts. It goes away. It's, that was a unique situation and it's, it's a tough one. And yes.
And then we also have to take into consideration with assaulting the stormwater management.
Stormwater management.
I believe that we have an agreement that, you know, there's an, an amount that we don't exceed, um.
This was a unique storm. It really was. And, and I understand, um, Vice President Roca's concern. It, it was, it was, it was tough.
Well.
May I ask a question, please?
Councilor.
Are you speaking about the apron or beyond the, the apron into the street area?
The apron into the street.
And it, but.
The sidewalk.
Just the sidewalk part?
Right.
But isn't that the homeowner's responsibility?
That's not, she's not talking, the sidewalk in front of the driveway, like the entrance into the driveway.
That's what I'm talking about. Okay, thank you.
Well, the answer seems to be we have to enforce.
It's a code.
It's a code issue and we have to enforce, but, I mean, it was just ridiculous that none of it was done. None of it. And people still had to go to work, kids still had to go to school, and these are the conditions, you know, so.
Well, I, we just have to come up with a better plan for enforcing and, and doing our, you know, just doing our jobs better. And that was, like I said, was a unique, a unique storm. It was just freezing, freezing when it started.
Yeah. So my question would be then, right, especially with the, the uniqueness of this storm, with the extreme cold. You know, you have, what, twenty-four hours from the time snow, the, the snow stops falling?
Yep.
To clear the property.
Correct.
But if it's already turned to ice within those twenty-four hours and you can't, you can't do that, then what is your, you, what is the recourse then? Because then we're violating our own ordinance.
Yeah, I think there is.
What do you mean? You have twenty-four hours from the time that the snow stops to clear the property?
Right.
Right. So how do you clear your, how do you clear your property of the, of the ice?
The twenty-four hours after that last snowstorm, the twenty-four hours after it stopped, it wasn't completely frozen. That, it was Monday. The snow stopped that went, that Sunday at like seven o'clock, right? So then you had until Monday, seven PM to clear, right? So whoever didn't get out there on Monday by seven PM.
It was a major problem.
Right. It was a major problem.
I'm saying it was a major problem because it was already iced over.
Mm-hmm. But it wasn't that ice, it wasn't.
It was still fro- it was still.
Temperatures hadn't gotten above twenty-something degrees.
Yeah, it was day, we had, we had a string of days.
Well, I must be superwoman because I shoveled my pavement.
So did I.
Okay. And I didn't have an issue.
I didn't either.
So we can't make excuses for why people didn't shovel their sidewalks.
So the, the apron, the aprons in particular are also, you know, on your side, no one is also driving on your sidewalk and heavy traffic on your sidewalk. Because when people are coming out of the apron, it compacts it. So I'm just saying that it's like, we, we.
It's part of the sidewalk though. That's what I'm saying.
It has to be done.
It's the sidewalk.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, so just, um, a thought because, you know, I, I had to get out there and break up and do all that too. But in terms of where someone is not able to do it and the fact that, y- again, people still had to get out and go to work. We had seniors that still had appointments to get to. We had children that were still going to go to school. In those areas, when you have that kind of compacted ice and everybody's not able to do it, does it make sense? And I'm asking because I don't know. In those events where salt is just not gonna get the job done at the point, could we have, uh, sawdust containers where, on those areas? Could, because I'm thinking all of those areas that people are passing through, the children are trying to get to school. If you've got people that have to be picked up by CCT or special, you know, that be, that need to access those areas, would something like that make sense?
That, we would use sand for that and sand would be a traction, but we're talking about every apron.
It's a lot.
And we're talking about thousands and thousands of aprons.
It's a lot, but, you know. Could we, could there be, if, if I noticed that that was happening in my area or any other resident and the person is not able to do it, could we make it so that they could contact Public Works and say, hey, we got this issue? Can you come out and put something down?
It's private property. And once we start doing for one, we have to do for all. And I'm sure there's a, um, a legality issue with that too.
Well, then, then it falls on the code department. The code department needs to make sure they're enforcing. Because I have photographs of the sidewalk that's completely covered in ice. And it was a dangerous situation, a dangerous situation. So at the end of the day, we all have to be held accountable, period. So code is gonna have to step up and really just be out there.
But really, honestly, if you put salt down, the salt is meant to melt the ice.
Counselor, salt doesn't work under twenty degrees.
Well, I put salt down and I didn't have a problem. I shoveled what was there. I put the salt down. It made a clear, uh, path for people to walk. So, I don't know.
Okay. All right. Um, is that in your report?
It is.
Oh, I'm not. One more. Brine. Do we brine the streets?
We pre-treat the streets. We pre-treat with salt. We absolutely do. Brining is, is expensive. We don't have the equipment to brine them. We'll pre-treat before a storm with salt, right before the snow comes down to stop the initial, um, icing over, which gives us time to actually get out there and do our job.
Now, which streets are we doing? Are we doing all the streets?
If we're pre-treating, we're doing, um, not all the streets, absolutely not. We're doing hills. We're doing curves. We're doing intersections, um, major intersections, anything that's, um, prominent in the town. I'm not doing a street that's flat. There's no reason to do a flat street because if you drive normally down a street, it's fine. Hills, intersections, front of the Borough Hall, um, fire department, ramps, bad curves, all that stuff we're gonna pre-treat.
What about plowing?
Plowing every, every route.
Every street.
Every street, several times, absolutely.
Against plow?
Every street. Nothing gets missed.
So, um, Madam Chair, just one other thought. Um, and, you know, I put salt down before it started.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, and that helps tremendously.
Yes, it does.
So is it possible that we could post something on the Borough website to suggest to the residents that when you know a, a storm like this is coming and it's gonna be for, that these are suggestions that you salt your steps and your sidewalks prior to the storm?
Information is always good. Education is wonderful. And we, like I said, we do it right before every storm to help us and help the town. Exactly. We get an accident and we didn't pre-treat and the police are calling us and we're rushing over to there and something else gets missed. So definitely, we're pre-treating. Brine is, is another really expensive, um, solution to what we do now.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
That's for me.
This is not about salt or ice. This is about, what is, um, the date for the, um, when they're doing the gas lines on Union Avenue?
I don't have an exact date when they're going to start. We're still, um, prepping. We're still trying to find places for them to store their equipment. Um, the sinus has to come up. I would say within the next month, they're gonna start testing. And when I say testing, they're gonna drill test holes. So we'll have a little bit of inconvenience, but I think probably within two months, they're gonna really start. And they'll do a couple blocks at a time. I know. We're gonna start in your area, I think, yeah.
You're gonna start on my.
Yeah, we're gonna start on your block, just on purpose.
Um, I, I actually probably need to talk to the chief because I wanted to know which way are you gonna detour this traffic? It's a lot of one-way streets around here. So you're gonna probably have to make some of the one-way.
We didn't get the plan yet from, um, from Penda and, and the engineers from Pico. But if I, once I get it, I'll send it off to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay.
My last question.
Sure. Come on.
Pine O and West Cops Street, that's sore.
Monday.
Monday what?
Monday is gonna be repaired. They, the, 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 the unit is in.
Monday is a holiday? Is it Monday?
They're working on Monday. We might be, yes. He just texted me today that Monday, they're gonna be repairing that. They just, they found a unit out in Jiggin Town somewhere.
Good.
Yeah. Okay. One more topic. I'm sorry. I didn't inform you on that.
Uh, you didn't?
I did not. I just got the text. Let me, let me send you.
All right. Thank you. So we're good?
We're good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Here's your report. Uh, public safety.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
For the month of January, the Police Department responded to one thousand thirty-six calls for service. We had five criminal arrests during the month. Four non-traffic citations were issued during the month. We had forty-four moving violations issued. There was nine hundred and eleven parking tickets issued. We started, we talked about it last month, Bus Patrol. It kicked off officially January sixth of twenty twenty-five. Currently, we're hovering around fifty-seven citations that were issued. Um, watching the videos, some of the violations, or most of the violations, were very egregious. Uh, people just overtaking buses and, um, so it's, it's actually working. And, you know, we're just keep getting them every day coming in. So, so Bus Patrol was a good idea and it's working out well. Uh, I had the privilege of talking at the library. Ms. Samuels voluntold a bunch of people at the class and over thirty people showed up last week. It was actually a really good talk. And I'm gonna bring up, I was invited to go speak at the Darby Rec Center on January the twenty se- I'm sorry, February the twenty-second. They're gonna be hosting the Aftershock movie. Um, this is an unbelievable movie. It's a great documentary. It's about the inadequacies in women's health as it pertains the, the black and brown community. It's an unbelievable show. Uh, I saw it when I was invited by Speaker McClintock last year and it was really, it was a touching. We were gonna have it here, but they decided to have it at Darby because it's a new rec center and a new police station, which attracts a lot of people. A new police station. Um, you say, you say enough, you can hear it over. Um, the other, other thing too is Everbridge. As Borough Manager said, we're gonna be signing, we're gonna be putting out the information on Everbridge. And I had the privilege last, this past Friday, Speaker Joanna McClintock came in the office to talk to us about some grants and some other things going on in the community. And she's definitely a great partner to the Police Department. Whenever we need anything, we can reach out to her and she's definitely a great ally and a very strong woman, as you were saying earlier, and she, she's really doing well. Uh, talking about Passport Parking, this is something that the Borough Manager and I have been working on. It's gonna be great. If you've been in media, it's the same setup. You'll have an app on your phone. That's how you're gonna pay to park. We are currently looking into kiosks, but they are very cost prohibitive. We're trying to maybe get one kiosk for people that still want to use cash. But as everything's going cashless, it's, the meters won't, with the new rates that were raised, the dollar an hour for the parking meters now, the meters won't sustain that. We don't have the technology and just to fix them, they're antiquated. I think the meters are pedal mic like.
They're going on, they're nine years old. They're digital and, uh, tonight, reprogrammed and this.
Yeah. So, and then I gave the Borough Manager a copy of what a new ticket looks like. He's gonna post it on the website. But we're still gonna have the old parking tickets, but the patrol officers will be issuing still the old tickets. But the new tickets rolled out will be at the parking enforcement level and it'll have the information how to pay online. It's real, it's really gonna work out well. And that ends the police report. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. One, I'm sorry. One thing, next week, I will be asking for, uh, permission to hire three officers contingent upon their background, successful completion of polygraphs, psychological and physical. And obviously, the background's real important. And one thing I can say is Mr. Trent had his other hat on the other day. Out of the people that interviewed, I, the, some unbelievable talent, un- unbelievable, with some great experience. Um, we, we're really blessed. And as the mayor pointed out, fourteen was a lot. Uh, I got calls from other chiefs. One of the departments recently had a test. Five people showed up. So get, at least getting fourteen applications. Some individuals did call and withdrew at the last minute because of the, the pay, because of the, the pay coming in, they couldn't take it. But we, you know, there was some great talent on this list, so.
So can I ask a question about the parking meters before we, so wasn't there another set of parking meters that were ordered and paid for, but then we didn't have the technology to, they were never, I felt like they were received and when Mr. Wright was here and he said that he was gonna sell them because we couldn't install them? Because I'm just thinking about the things that you put on Minnesota bid. No? Okay. Okay.
We have the digital stamp. They may have been sold when Mr. Wright was here. The hole was antiquated, uh, mechanical.
Oh, okay.
They're not, they're not in the, uh, in the borough at all, not, not the minehouse.
Okay. All right. Mr. Trent?
Yeah. Um, will the same parking tickets be issued for like people parking stop signs or other?
Yes. What, what the goal is, is to have the parking enforcement officers utilize the new technology right away. And we're gonna have one or two units available for the patrol. And then eventually the, eventually we'd like to switch everyone to using that unit. But they have to carry around a stand-around unit, a standalone unit with an ana- with a phone, an Android phone. So we're trying to figure out a way that they can do it from their patrol car. But, so, but so far, we'll have the new tickets and the old tickets, but we want to put it out there so people don't think they're being scammed when they see the ticket. So they'll, the community will know.
Uh, quick question about the new tickets. I'm noticing that there's no discount for payment within a certain amount of time. No, I'm just, I'm confirming.
We, we discussed that on the calls and they're gonna have that on there. When they go on, they can, you know, if it's in that window period, it'll come up as a discount, yes.
Okay, you're still gonna maintain that.
And it works too. I donated a dollar forty to the Borough today because I showed somebody. I went on the app to show. Because you're gonna have parking zones now and you put it in there and it, it, you see the text message fifteen minutes prior like, hey, you're about to expire.
Oh, okay.
Not expire, but not.
We don't need that. So what's the, uh, what's the name of that?
Park Pass, or Passport. Passport, passport. Passport.
Passport.
Passport. If you've been to media, it's the same app media utilizes.
Okay. Thank you.
And, uh, may I ask a question? The parking one-way.
Yes.
How is that working now?
The hot topic.
You know, because you, you started something a few months ago where you can't, where most of the traffic is parked a certain way, but someone will come and park in the opposite direction.
That, that was actually done, that was actually done, uh, two years ago and we hired our parking guys. They went around and they were writing it, they were writing the ticket. So we posted it online. Plus, we posted it on, it's been posted. It's against the state law to. It's against the state law to park in the opposite, in the same direction, or the opposite direction of traffic. So what happens is when they park that way, when they pull out, they're gonna be in a head-on collision. So it's a safety thing more than anything. So that's why the cars have to be lined up. And it's been posted and we even posted it again? Because we had a sergeant that went out one night and wrote 40 tickets on it. And it's not, we're not, he just went out and wrote 40 tickets one night for that, so.
And it's not something, and it's not something you came up with, it's a state law?
It's a state law, it's on the ticket.
That has been in existence for how many years?
2006.
And people do what they wanna do.
Yeah, and I mean, I know somebody said, and I'm, I don't wanna sound, you know, I don't wanna sound rude, but.
Don't sound like it then.
No, I'm gonna sound like it. But somebody said, why don't you, why don't you warn us? And I'm like, well, you know what, maybe I should put a sign up, you can't rob somebody, you can't steal a car, you can't, I mean, it's, you know? Ignorance of the law is no excuse, right, Counselor?
Absolutely. So my, uh.
I'm sorry, that Counselor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry. I'd say Madam President.
Alright. Um, so my, uh, suggestion would be to make sure that we are continuing to enforce. You've already ripped the Band-Aid off, so might as well just.
We have to be consistent.
Yes, yes.
Be consistent with it. Um, and if it, if it's what we need to do, we need to make sure that we're being consistent. Otherwise, it'll appear discriminatory, so.
In addition to being consistent with people that park on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Because apparently, they didn't know they weren't allowed to do that either.
Yes, yes. Yes. And, and I didn't come up with this line, but I heard one, somebody say, well, you got away with, they said, I've been doing this for 18 years. And I'm like, look at the bright side, you got away with it for 18 years. I, well, not my line, I can't, I take credit for that one, so.
Absolutely.
I had to call the police on my neighbor because he refused to move his truck off of my pavement. And I'm saying, when it grates, you're not gonna help me pay for it. So you have, and he refused to move it. So I had to call the police and the police made him move it right then and there.
Did he get a ticket?
They gave him a ticket and made him move it in his pajamas. Yes, they did. So thank you very much.
Alrighty. Is that in your report?
Yes, the police report.
Alright.
Thank you very much. Do you have an emergency management report?
Yes, I do. And, um, it's, it's a serious topic. We all saw what happened on the 31st of January in Northeast Philly? At my old stopping grounds, the Roosevelt Mall. Spent many, many, many weekends there. Um, but it just proves why emergency management is important? And to work with partners and to break the silos and to work with other communities in and around. I mean, everyone responded there. It, it's a tragic event. And remember, we're on a flight approach here? So it's something to think about and something that I'm sure the next emergency management meeting we go to, we'll be discussing the topics of, God forbid, something like that happens. But another thing, and not to put Mike under the radar again, we got another emergency management report. This Saturday and this Sunday, more ice storms, sleet, rain and accumulation up to one to three inches.
Sounds fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have our Planning Commissioner.
Um, we have nothing current to report, Madam President.
Alright, thank you. Well, thank you for taking on the task of the Yaden 25. Uh, the old Yaden 25. Uh, Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. So as you know, we are in the process of planning Flag Day. And we are excited. I've been running myself ragged already and wearing out the committee already. But we are planning to have, um, the normal stuff that we had last year. But we're moving Flag Day back over to Longacre Boulevard. I don't know if I mentioned that last month? As opposed to Curfield. I do have a meeting with the school district, uh, on the 28th to use the baseball diamond for, um, I'm not sure if we're gonna do a drone? Show or fireworks? I talked with the committee about this because Lansdowne kinda gave me an idea? That fireworks are getting a little antiquated because of a lot of reasons. We have people in the community that have issues with fireworks. I mean, and it is definitely a thing. We have autistic people in this community, we have people that have PTSD? And we have pets that get scared of fireworks. So I am in the process of possibly securing a drone show, which I'm really excited for that. But I have to see economically what that would cost the Borough to do that as opposed to the fireworks. Um, I have quite a few entertainment people lined up, um, for Flag Day. We are excited. So we're working together as a committee to get the vendors and, so we're working hard. I mean, we started early for a reason. We wanna get this stuff nailed down and have a nice event. We are going to do the parade, so Chief, talk to your people, the fire, um, staff as well. So more information to come. The flyer is done, so I wanna have that posted on the website as soon as possible. Please get the word out and invite your people. Um, there should be something for everyone. Also, I just speak to, ironically, the chief mentioned Aftershock. I talked to Lucille Pratt, Council Pratt over in Darby the other day? Because we're gonna use one of the entertainment vendors that Darby used for their event, um, last year. And we had a nice conversation how Darby and Yaden needs to start doing more collaboration together. So she did invite me as well, she's the Council President, she did invite me as well to come to the movie. So you may see me, Chief, that day. Um, I'm forgetting something, but Roy, um, you'll remind me, I'm sure. So we'll, we'll keep you posted. Also, real quick, I did meet with the NOW about Juneteenth. So we are partnering with the NOW. Um, we were not in a financial position to fund Juneteenth and Flag Day, obviously. But what I am doing with the NOW board is working with them to put a program together. I told them I'm doing Flag Day, I'll definitely help you, but I can't do both. So we did forward some information for grant funding for Juneteenth. So we will have people from the NOW help us with Flag Day and things of that nature and vice versa. So, you know, that's another collaboration that I would like to see happen as well? Because they are part of our community. So, um, keep your eyes open and more to come. Roy? Hit it.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Uh, Camp Garrett is getting ready to start its hiring. Um, if you know of people who are interested in jobs as teachers, assistant teachers, camp counselors? They're doing a camp counselor recruitment at Pinewood High School. Junior counselors, camp coordinators? And if anyone knows, uh, a school nurse or a camp nurse who may be interested. So we're gonna post this on the website and get it out to all of our social media connections. Uh, the information is on the, on the report. Uh, there will be a free rain garden workshop, not rain barrel, rain garden workshop? At the Haverford Community Center on Saturday, March 1st, uh, in Haverford. And the instructions for registration, uh, will be posted. There's a flyer, uh, that you can take, it's also out in the hallway, about the rain garden workshop. Um, so if you're interested, we're gonna have a lot of rain this spring, we hope. Uh, so if you're interested in putting a rain garden on your property, uh, you can do that. Uh, plans are underway for a rain barrel workshop, uh, to be held in Yaden, uh, in either in April or May. So, um, we are gonna try to get that on the council, on the calendar? Uh, so we don't have any snafus, uh, with that. But be on the lookout for the rain barrel workshop, uh, which will be coming soon. And then finally, uh, the Stormwater Coalition and Penn State Extension are working on a program? To provide trees for residents who live in an environmental justice area? And we are in one of them. So, um, we will be giving out trees, uh, sometime in the spring? And it will probably be held over at Little Flower over in that area? So we can give away lots of trees? So we'll keep you updated on that. Any questions?
What time is your, um, the rain garden workshop? The time?
Uh, we, it's usually about 7 o'clock, 6:30, 7 o'clock. It'll be held here, we'll probably hold it on the, on the second floor? And then we'll give rain barrels out that night.
Not the barrels, the rain garden workshop?
Oh, the rain garden workshop. Uh, the time is 9 to 12.
Okay.
I, thank you for mentioning that, didn't post it. But yeah, there's 35 people signed up already? So if you're really interested in it, just call, uh, them? Or either you can register right on the website, which is on the, uh, the flyer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Roy, what, what's your, uh, what's the timeframe for Camp Garrett, like, starting?
Uh, as soon as possible.
So I mean, when does the camp start?
Camp starts the third week of June and runs through the second week of August. And there's another two weeks after that. Usually, Yaden is involved for eight weeks? But there's another two weeks up until almost Labor Day? Where they can opt to go there if they, or stay there if they want to? Uh, but usually, it's an eight-week period. So like June 21st through August 10th? Eight weeks. And the bus is still picking up at the Yaden Library and dropping off at the Yaden Library. So we hope to have a lot of Yaden residents, kids going. Yeah.
And they typically send out a brochure?
Yeah, they send out a brochure.
It has all of the information on there too? And, because I know I've seen it down in the lobby.
Yeah, what we're going to do is try to have some of the interviews for the kids here? Um, so they don't have to travel to Camp Garrett? Because that's kind of prohibitive for some of our kids. So you're gonna try to have it at Pinewood High School? And as we did in the past, we'll have some here at the Borough? Um, which has worked out very well because we were able to hire a lot of Yaden kids. Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Alright, there's nothing else?
There is something else, Madam Chair. So there's a bit of misinformation being spread throughout the community with respect to right-to-know requests? And I think this would be a good time to really reiterate the process.
Okay? So?
Counselor? Could you explain to our community what the process around rights and no requests?
No problem.
Thank you.
So any citizen, any resident or citizen who is interested can file a right-to-know request with the Borough? And then the Borough has five business days to respond. If the request is exorbitant or it would take more time, the Borough can request 30 additional days to gather whatever information that the resident has requested. Is that?
Solicitor, when you say the resident has to, um, submit the request to the Borough? You mean the right-to-know officer?
Yes, the right-to-know officer.
Who is Mr. Cave, Rafi Cave? Do these requests go to any of the council members?
No, it should go directly to the right-to-know officer.
Absolutely. And I'll speak for myself and I, I'm pretty safe to say, I'm speaking for everyone up here. None of the councilors receive right-to-know requests.